Okay, let's call this meeting the Hayesville Planning Commission to order. It's the first item in business as a roll call.
Asia?
Here.
Franken?
Here.
Plummer?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Wellington?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Hatchet?
Here.
Next item of business is the presentation and approval of minutes of July 9th, 2020. Make a motion to approve the minute. Thank you. Deb can, she wasn't here. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented, all in favor.
Aye.
I'm abstaining.
Any other abstentions? Item four, we have a special order of business, public hearing to consider text revision to the zoning code. You want to present that?
Did you want to re-read it?
I wasn't sure if, yeah, I guess. "To protect the rights of all parties involved and in order to create an opportunity for everyone to speak their own opinions and present information, the Hayesville Planning Commission follows specific procedure in reaching a decision. A copy is available by the door. Your attention to this procedure is appreciated. We now formally open the public hearing to consider the subdivision regulations for the city of Hayesville." That should read zoning text revisions to the city of Hayesville. Staff, please present the zoning text revisions.
Okay. Well, before you is the official staff report. What is being requested today are revisions to the actual zoning code, which does apply to citywide. Sections that we're looking to change would be the definitions, our A district regulations, the one and two family, two, three, and four family apartment and light commercial district, as well as changing our wireless technology communications and the cargo containers. Our recommended action would be that you adopt these revisions to the zoning code and forward a recommendation of approval to the council. So on November 14th, the planning commission did begin their annual review of the zoning code. We did propose the code into sections, I don't know if you remember that, we were going to look at it a little bit at a time. Then COVID happened and we had to take a delay, so what we're presenting here tonight are some of the items that were kind of high on the city's list of things that we wanted to go ahead and get done. And then we'll continue that review. Probably once the new person comes in. So we continued, we didn't even get past section one. So we're working on those. At the last meeting, we did look at some of these changes to set the public hearing date. I did word that incorrectly and it should have just been a notification. So any voting that took place that day would not count because we had not had the actual public hearing, which is what we're doing here today. So it is the changes that you looked at last time and does not include any of the recommendations that were made. So what we're looking at specifically are the wireless communication facilities. And that is section 505, I believe. That was to bring the city into compliance with the FCC regulations. Some of the major changes, we're adding some definitions and shot clocks to the procedures. It's going to permit the small wireless and the DAS facilities as a conditional use in residentially zoned districts and commercial or industrial districts as a permitted use. So what this is saying, that the small wireless and the DAS facilities could be in public right-of-way. Those wouldn't come before any approval body. But, and it also establishes a certain shot clock, so decisions have to be made within certain time periods or it's just deemed approved. And there would be nothing that we could do about it after that. And then they did also put in place fee maximums, so those would be in there as well. And in your big packet of changes, it's going to be kind of the middle section because that is the bulk of the changes that were made. Next would be the cargo containers. As you know, the cargo containers are becoming more common additions as homeowners and businesses acquire these containers as temporary or permanent accessory structures, primarily for storage at this point. And we do recognize that there are uses for this. What we are recommending is that in certain districts, they have certain controls on them. For instance, in residential, that they would be as a temporary use for no more than 30 days within a calendar year and size restrictions of 160 square feet and no more than nine feet tall. In the commercial zoning districts, the D and E, they should be, should not be visible from the public street, either by placement or by landscape or fencing. But it does go on to say that if the building, if it's right behind you but it faces you, even though you're adjacent, that it would, you wouldn't have to do screening requirements. I can't talk today. Okay. And that they cannot be used as a base or platform, platform for identification signs or temporary signs, not located in any required front or side yard setback or street right-of-way, and should be located at grade level and not stacked. And then exceptions to these would be cargo containers used for onsite construction purposes for a period not to exceed the duration of construction with the valid permit and for no more than 180 days for construction projects that do not require a building permit. And any legally existing cargo containers may not conforming on the effective date would need to come into conformance by September 1st of 2021. So this would give any of those a year to come into conformance.
Do we also have an exception for pods for people moving?
Yes.
That's in there as well?
Yeah. Okay. Then next will be the assisted living facilities. I'll just go over this a little. So community surveys and studies conducted by this committee have indicated the community's desire and need for assisted living facilities to be located within the city limits to allow residents the opportunity to age in place. Currently, Hayesville zoning ordinance addresses nursing or convalescent homes, which are only allowed in light commercial and heavy commercial zoning districts, and senior living apartments, which while not specifically defined, are allowed within our apartments zoning district. There are no provisions at this time for assisted living facilities, which have grown in popularity in recent years as people and families seek alternatives to nursing homes. So what the recommendation is here is to define assisted living and to allow it as a conditional use in the single family, as a permitted use in any of the multifamily districts and light commercial districts. The reason we are recommending this is that assisted living is classified as a residential activity and as a residence or accommodation function based on the land-based classification system put in place by the American Planning Association. We have also done some studies and found that other areas do allow this as well. Lawrence, Topeka, and Hutchinson are the local ones or within Kansas that would allow assisted living, either as a special use or conditional use in single family districts. There are other states that I looked at as well, but I just restricted it to Kansas for now. Okay, and I already went over the changes. You will read in your packet the actual definition that we wanted to read is the nursing and convalescent home. Then we're going to put in place a definition for assisted living, nursing facility, skilled nursing care. And then, like I said, do the conditional use as a single family and then as a permitted use in one and two family, two, three, and four family, C, the apartment, and D, light commercial. I would like to go ahead and kind of go over the difference between a conditional use and a zone change?
Please do.
For a conditional use, the processes are very similar. So with either a zoning or a conditional use, we do have to notify all properties within 200 feet if they're within the city. We have to publish that notification in the paper for 20 days. Also, the residents have to get 20 days' notice. And then the public hearing, similar to this one, is then held. With the conditional use, what that does is put criteria that the planning commission can consider and put extra conditions on that property, where a zone change would just change that actual zoning classification. A lot of the details that you're looking at are similar, such as uses in the area, how long the property's been vacant, and all the different rules of Golden decisions that you need to base it off of. But, like I said, the conditional use is different conditions and they are not listed to a specific company, they are listed to that property. So should we put these conditions on, say, Company A? If they sell to Company B, they still have to follow those. Unless you were to put a condition in place that it either expired with that property owner and then it would just go away. But there are different conditions that you can put in place. Are there any questions on that?
So how does that, how does that align then with what we had discussed and heard from the public with what you're saying in here? Because I'm wanting to make sure that I'm correct, because we had quite a bit of a public feedback that they did not want to have these allowed in, you know, in a single family. And so that verbiage is saying by conditional use.
Yeah, so it's the same as what our original recommendation by staff was, which was to allow it as a conditional use. So no change has been made because the recommendation that was made at the last meeting wasn't valid because we didn't notify the whole public. We hadn't had an actual public hearing on it. So it is the same recommendation? Or is that not what you're asking?
No, no, that's me.
Okay, yes. So it is the exact same that you considered last time?
So you're saying that the vote last time is void?
Correct, because we didn't have the public hearing.
So we need to go through the public hearing process the right way, have the discussion after the public comment section is closed, and discuss all of that after we've heard everyone that's here to speak.
Agreed.
Okay.
So with that, in your packet were, you were emailed this that had all the changes that are actually redlined as well as just the summary, but that way you could look at what the specifics were. As I said, it is rather thick, so hopefully you're able to get through it. I also presented some information on conditional uses, just so you could see the differences on those and what, how they're important. We did note in this that one of the examples of a good use for a conditional use or a good application of a conditional use are for assisted living in residential areas. I thought that was interesting. As far as the public comments, what we have received from the public to date is the letter that you did receive at the last meeting from Neil and Nina Hockersmith, a letter from Bruce Armstrong, and a letter from Zach M. Patton. I can read those to you if you want, but if you had a chance and you've read them already, I will skip that. And then we did also have a gentleman, Elvin Leedy. He's the owner of Park Avenue Storage, and he just came in and requested a copy of the reviews. And then we did have a gentleman call and ask questions about the process. And I did not catch his name.
Any more questions for staff? Okay. Now is the time for any member of the public to speak. You have five minutes. If you are presenting good factual information, this time may be extended by vote. Please state your name, and I'm going to call out the cards that were filled out. And I think I've got them in the order that we received them. So Neil Hockersmith. State your name and address, just for the record.
Neil Hockersmith, 410 North Lyman. Alrighty. Good afternoon again.
Welcome back.
Glad to be back. Just, I'll be very brief and within the five minutes, to respect you guys' time. But I just want to clarify a few points and also in response to the letters that I saw in the packet from the other comments from the council. So just in general, last month when we talked about this, it was very clear that this was, change was not for any particular area. But it was just based on what I see in the letters, that it's pretty clear where this particular area is defined for. Which would be, I grant, I understand that this would make the zoning change for all of Hayesville, but it's pretty clear that this is for the east half of the River Forest section. So I'd like to, my points I'm making right now are just pertaining to that. So with that, I also noticed in that letter that it said that this has been a 20-years' plan in the making, which is good. Glad to see that it's been that long a plan. However, I would say it's a bit unfortunate that we'd be trying to put that plan into place with an area that is already has development, has already planned development. What I'm meaning by that is that there's people that have bought, myself included, other homeowners that have built homes there recently, the last few years, who were under the impression that that neighborhood was going to be fully developed like originally planned at some point in the future. So not knowing that, that there's a possible change to that, I would guarantee that there would not be as many people buying in the neighborhood. So also, there alludes to some points, some surveys that was done. And I'll be very interested in those surveys. I know that there wasn't anybody in our neighborhood that was surveyed. I'm not sure what the population of that survey was, so just a notice that that'd be, that'd be interesting to see what the surveys and the real interest are to the, to the city of Hayesville. So then bringing up that point, or the next point, then there's a letter that discusses the valuation of the land and if an assisted living center would be built there. That it puts a number of $10 million. I think there's roughly, I'm summarizing it here, about 1.5 million of the land, $5 million for the building, $3 million for surrounding areas, maybe a few extra mill here and there, but it gets you about $10 million. So I do understand that comparison of what that valuation would be versus not building anything at all. But if we want to do a real apples-apples comparison of what that valuation would be if there were family homes that were built there, then, one, I would ask if that has been done. If it hasn't been done, then we can quickly go through it, at least what it is in my head. That's 40 lots, 250 K a pop, that gets you right at $10 million off the bat. And then that's not taking account of the property tax and the sales tax that you would have from those families that are living there, which would be substantially more than the assisted living center would provide. I don't think anybody can argue that a family home by square footage would be less than a assisted living center by square footage. Okay? So with that, I also saw that there was a comment about, out of all of Hayesville, these are the only options, which is just surprising to me, that'd be the only options available just from my driving around of the, of the area. Obviously, it wasn't part of the surveying of that. And lastly, just to summarize this very quickly here, the note about the golden years. And I understand that citizens and residents, they want to go through the golden years in the city that they lived in and were raised in. I just want to point out that there are several other options available than assisted living center that are becoming much more popular and much more economic, such as home healthcare, which you're allowed to live in your home and you have somebody that comes in and provides care for you as you need it, which is much more economical value. As a family that has several, several nurses in their background, when my parents are getting ready to reach that age, I will not even consider going to assisted living center. One, because it's not regulated by any sorts of, of government influence. And there's also this letter, or packet here if you guys want. That just details a little bit of things like that. So just in summary, if this is something that the city really wants and really believes in, then one, why are we giving away for free? And why are we put in a place where we, the residents right around it, do not wish it's there? So that's everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next card I have is Jeff Patterson.
Jeff Patterson, 406 East K, Hayesville, Kansas. I really wanted to speak just a moment to the group and I watched the video from the previous meeting, so I kind of understand the vote and what happened and why, and I understand why it's not valid. What I would like to add to that is that, so to me, the assisted, I'd like to say that I feel the assisted living facility should not be zoned in a type 3 residential, even under conditional use. Also, I have a few reasons that I see, increased traffic, whether that's visitors, Sura staff, emergency vehicles, delivery vehicles going through, you know, which is essentially just a couple of neighborhood streets right there. I too, similar to Neil, was curious about the value. Has the city done any studies to see what the property values when we rezone something like that and allow like an assisted living facility? What's that do for all of those new homes that are over there? Especially when, you know, we're kind of in a private niche community where, to me personally, that was what the value was, was I was back away from kind of the rest of the hustle-bustle, but then also close, so that my, my two boys could walk over to McDonald's or Pizza Hut or, you know, be part of the city. I feel like this development is currently growing and doing fairly well. Most of the lots have been sold or developed on that are currently developed. Obviously, that other side still needs to have road improvements and that sort of thing done. But I think that by choosing to not allow homes to continue to build there, that we're cutting off a pipeline of new Hayesville citizens, so. The other thing I'd like to bring up is, in reading through the notes that were delivered by Zach and Mayor Armstrong, was that it appears that the, there's a note that, for instance, this similar situation exists at 215 North Lamar with the Diversicare. And so I'd ask you again, when we're talking about home values, what are the home values around that area? Are they similar? Are they in the, you know, $250,000 range like, like many of the homes over here in this neighborhood are? And then lastly, Zach mentioned in the letter that he submitted that this has kind of been in the works since the 90s. Several of us bought those lots from the Hayesville land bank and there was no mention of that while we were purchasing those lots either. So it was mentioned that the HOA was currently run by the city, that there was a whole other side of things to be expanded still. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that we bought that with an intent of that being a completely residential area. And that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next I have Tom Gibson.
Probably can't hear me if I leave that on, so I'm going to take it off. You still may not be able to hear me. Tom Gibson, 247 Ranger, thank you for allowing me to spend my time with you this evening and hopefully inform you a little bit. This project, had they discussed this at all? This project was, after the tornado struck our town in May of 99, FEMA decided we needed to do a study in our community on what we needed to do to redevelop our community. And in this, on page seven and eight, and I'm not going to read it to you because I think you all can read, but I did make copies for you, if you'd like to read through it. One thing it talks about in there is the need for senior housing in our community, that there's no senior housing here. Every one of these that we've had done in the city since 99, and I believe we've had two others done, the response has been the same thing from the people that are doing the surveys and checking out our community and talking to the people in our community. One thing we're lacking drastically is senior housing. We have no place for our folks to go as they age out. This isn't going to be senior housing like you would think you would see like Diversicare. The whole program here is to develop a program where you could move in there today and you would be self-sufficient in your own little apartment or duplex. You'd take care of yourself. You'd all be on ground floor, there's no steps in these. The doors are wide enough, so if you happen to be in a wheelchair, the doors are wide enough for you to get that wheelchair through. But it also allows you to progress as time goes on and the end of life comes to stay in that same area. I don't know that there's a lot of traffic going to be there. Those people don't drive. A lot of those people, especially if they're in their long-term care, they don't drive. The people like myself, I drive a little bit. I don't drive nearly as much as I used to. I don't know that the traffic is going to be increased that much. Our community is in dire need of some senior housing. This actually would be more than a community senior housing. This would be a regional senior housing. Think about it. There is nothing west of the Arkansas River like this, period. I don't care how far west and how far south you go. This would be the only facility. It would not be something just for the citizens of Hayesville, but it'd be for other people in the area. Okay, so we're building this for people outside of Hayesville residents. That's fine, but those people, when they come in and visit their family, also going to visit some of the other businesses in the community. It's the side items that's going to help out the community as a whole. But I really think this program in that area, a developer is hard to find to do this. Those people aren't falling off trees and knocking on their door and saying, hey, we want to come in here and build a retirement center in your community. Number one reason is the price of the dirt. The city was fortunate enough to buy this land several years ago at the courthouse steps for an auction. They got it at a very reasonable price. Gives us the ability to either pass that on to those people at that same price and still maintain our monies for the city, but get something in our community that is direly needed in our community that is needed here for, well, since 99, 21 years. So please consider this as you go through, and if anybody's got any questions, I'll answer them. Thank you for your time.
Oh, yes, question? Sorry, who did you say prepared that and what was the actual title of this thing?
FEMA prepared this after the tornado. They paid for having this put together after the tornado.
So it was prepared by Camrose?
Camrose Limited.
And its title?
Hayesville Disaster Recovery Program. There's copies, I'm sure there's copies of it here in the city building.
Yes.
If not, at the library, so. It's available for you, the whole program. Hey, I think you wanted to see the whole book, just the part that was printed for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim Landers.
Good evening. My name is Kim Landers. I've lived in Hayesville for over 35 years.
What address, for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, just making sure you get it in there.
Thank you. Kim Landers. I live at 228 Champion.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt.
That's fine, and I've lived there for 35 years. I'm also the director of the Hayesville Senior Center. I've been the director for 14 years. Four or five years ago, Marie Riggs came and spoke with me and circulated a petition that gathered between 250 and 300 signatures asking for the city to consider developing and building an assisted living facility within the city. Marie stated that she had watched her friends and neighbors age and they had to relocate outside of that area of Hayesville. They would move to facilities that would help them live more comfortably with less yard care and less home repair issues. Since that time, her petition has been discarded, but the need for assisted living facilities has grown. Regardless of why or when this happens, it is more difficult for family and friends to maintain that relationship, leaving the elderly with diminished social connections when they need them most if they can't be here to be with their family. Did you know that isolation has the same effect on the body as if someone has smoked 10 cigarettes or consumed three drinks a day? Isolation also has a severe effect on the mind as well. Generally, I receive between three and four calls a month from people who has Generally, I receive between three and four calls a month from people who has a family member that is coming out of rehab, and they need some help, and they ask me where the assisted living facility is in Hayesville. They need more help than they can give their family member. And sadly, I have to tell them that there is no facility here in Hayesville. Sometimes their parents are at a point where they need a little help with their daily activities, but they certainly don't need to go to a nursing home. And so their hands are tied. Maybe they just need some help checking blood sugars, preparing some meals, some basic things. Also, please consider about the sales tax dollars that the city would collect, the tax dollars for the school district if someone were living here, and the money that the residents would spend at their grocery store, at a pharmacy, at local dining establishments. Overall, assisted living is considerably different than the care that you would receive at a nursing home. The main difference is, at a nursing home, the care is provided in a area that they provide the medical and personal care in a clinical setting. But in assisted living, they provide personal care in a home-like social setting. Both of them are integral needs in our city. But the greatest difference is the price that you pay. Assisted living facilities provide assistance with bathing and dressing, medication management, housekeeping and laundry services. They provide up to three home-cooked meals a day, social activities and transportation. I know that there is a letter of concern that was sent to the Planning Commissions, and one of the items in this letter states that employees of the proposed assisted facility, living facility, would leave litter in the area, and that the facility owner would not maintain the area. I would like to state that at the Hayesville Senior Center, we are directly south of Main Street Housing. I have never seen a bunch of litter in the area. It is always taken care of. There is no issue of increased traffic despite the fact that we have people who live there who have visitation from family. They have medical services being rendered, whether that's through home healthcare or whether it's oxygen being delivered, pharmacy deliveries. There's never a big traffic jam, and I'm here to tell you, they're not flooring it, going through the streets. That's the last thing we see. The most action that I see is from the UPS truck running to get to the next stop. In the letter of concern, there was an article that was cited, Residential Care Facility Ruining the Neighborhood. This article was published six years ago, in 2014, in the AV Times, which is out in Palmdale, California, near Pebble Beach. I don't think that has any comparability to the city of Hayesville. I don't think you could even think about that. The name of the facility is called the Napoli in the Desert. It is a facility that provides habilitation services and care or treatment to adults and children diagnosed with developmental disabilities. This is not the type of clientele that I would anticipate that we would have in assisted living. In the end, it's not about keeping people in Hayesville, but attracting them to Hayesville. Employees of an assisted living facility may decide they want to move to Hayesville so they're closer to work. The family of a potential resident may want to move closer to a relative who is living here. People who have to move directly into a nursing home rather than the step-down process of going to assisted living and then possibly to a nursing home tend to decline in their mental and physical capacity. Please take this into consideration when you vote tonight on the proposed amendment. Thank you for your attention, and I believe that you have a sheet that looks like this, says surrounding.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And if you just look at it, there's communities all over Hayesville, Andover, Augusta, Clearwater, and I have listed on there the number of assisted living facilities. And if you look at Hayesville, we've got the big zero.
Okay, thank you.
Is it possible to ask her a question before she gets?
Yes.
Ma'am, in your listing here, you've got for the surrounding cities that offer assisted living facilities? How many of those facilities are in residential type A?
What I did was, I went to the state of Kansas, licensure, and I looked up the number of facilities that were licensed in each city, licensed under assisted living. That is where I came up with these numbers.
What zoning types are these?
The state of Kansas does not collect that on the website I was at. This was just a list of care homes and assisted living within the state of Kansas.
Okay. Thank you. I had the same question. Thank you for asking that.
Thank you.
I have a general impression that there's been talk of a place facility already. Do we have any idea of what size this facility would be? How many rooms are?
Not that we can disclose, but you'd be looking at a smaller scale, 24 to 30 beds at this time is what you... We have nothing formalized. There's nothing, there's no contracts, no agreements, no nothing at this point. We're here just to debate getting assisted living facilities somewhere in the zoning code so I can then recruit the said zoning, or the said assisted living facilities.
I'm just wondering if any of these ones or ones that you guys run across might have limitations on a smaller size, as like maybe six persons per facility type of situation for more residential setting.
I don't honestly know.
If, I don't know what those populations are. However, if it were a six-person one, that could be a group home, which could then be within anywhere in town.
Which, I mean, there is no conditional use on any of the other zoning codes, right? It'd just be, so.
Hey, I don't want to get too far into the weeds before we get through public comment. There's discussion is supposed to happen after, so.
Sorry.
We're gonna move on, if that's all right with everybody. Thank you. Next is Zach McHatten.
Good evening, Chair and Commission. I'll try not to, there's some points that have been already stated, so I'll try not to echo those.
State your address.
And make new points. You know, I talked to Tim Norton, our former mayor, oh, sorry, Zach McHatten.
Yeah, you know the rules.
Economic Development Director, and I live and work at 140 North Main. I talked to Tim Norton, our former mayor and Cedar County Commissioner, last week about this, and he was a part of that study that Tom had brought in. And assisted living was always looked to over in that area over there, not to get specific, but that is where they were citing it. Then the tornado hit, things got a little bit complicated. The firm that came in, I believe, was from Chicago, the FEMA hired to do that study for us. We did do a lot of the stuff that was in that study. He talked about the difficulties of the punch-through with the railroad, and when we raised the railroad over here, they didn't want to punch-through over here, but we were like, you're gonna stop your trains and you're gonna block that off. And we, so they fought, they stood their ground, they got the punch-through, because Carla was always, whether there's an assisted living, whether there's senior living, whether there's residential, Carla was always supposed to be a connector to Broadway to Seneca. I would just like to kind of comment and pick up on some of the stuff that was brought to my attention here. The surveys, the studies, the petitions, you know, they said that the lots were sold by the land bank and that we, they were under the impression that River Forest would be looked at as residential living. At that time, we didn't know what we were gonna do. I didn't tell anybody what we were gonna do, if anything. Right then, at that time, current moment, 2016 to 2018, when we were selling lots, it was plotted as a residential development by the original developer. We had an assisted living feasibility study in 2018 that came in and identified that as a potential. We mapped out, staff mapped out, all the potential lots that could be used for an assisted living facility within the city limits of Hayesville, going along with the site selector parameters of what an assisted living facility, senior living community place is going to look for, acreage, utilities, and location to the amenities such as fire, EMS, all those things that are important. So they were the ones who came up with the idea of the River Forest. If you want to go back and read that, they're the ones who came up with the number, you figure $500,000 for the land and then another $500,000 just to put the road through and the utilities. You know, they were the ones who recommended that we use the land as a bargaining chip to recruit the assisted living facility, because if they look at the Lust property over here on Grand, they want a million dollars for it. So right out the gate, your, the assisted living facility is going to come in at a million dollars, and the million dollars goes for a long way for a facility. So if we want to get to talking about valuations of facilities, you know, three to five million for an assisted living facility of any kind of size, for the 24-bed to 30-bed, then plus you look at all the different types of, like Mr. Hocke Smith said, different forms of living that could go there, the different stages to basically age in place where you cross the street. Those things all add into the value of that 10.5 million that I came to. And it's, we can play the, I can find comparables, but we just don't have time to go over those. You know, there's public feedback, there's surveys, there's studies. It was in the Economic Development Assessment Study that we needed an assisted living facility. We had hundreds of people interviewed for these studies and surveys. I'm sorry, it wasn't a petition, but it just didn't, they didn't, River Forest didn't really exist over there at that time. Public feedback is, we want an assisted living facility. There are subdivisions. I'll give the example of my hometown in Eldorado. There's Homestead out by Eldorado Lake. The anchor is the assisted living facility. My friend drives by the assisted living facility every day. I said, is it lowering your property values? He's like, no, I don't even notice the assisted living facility, and they also have a combination of different kinds of senior living there now. You know, tonight's zoning is for the whole community, not a specific subdivision. I promise you, when we get to River Forest or the Lust property or some Willows, wherever it's at, we will come, you will hear from me again, I promise, and you will, we will probably have whoever we're working with, the corporation, because they would like to come in and present themselves and show that they're not gonna, what they're gonna do and what their product is. So let's, tonight, focus, I believe that it is a, you know, I had a company contact me this week, I can't give their name, but they were like, your numbers now come up in our parameters for our site selection. We'd like to have a conversation for a, there's an application process for federal grants to help build facilities, but that's not until February 2021. Whoa, that's five minutes. May I request an extension of time? I just have a few more points.
How much longer?
Give me two minutes.
All in favor? I guess, is there a motion for approval of two minutes?
I'll second it.
Yeah. Motion second, all in favor, extension of two minutes?
Aye.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I'll be quick. So the company contacted me, I don't have a place to home or even house or recruit, I just need the ability to tee this off. So we need to get it, and my recommendation to this committee, or this commission, is to put it in a residential district. Make it a conditional use. Take your power, then you have the ability for traffic, for noise pollution, light pollution, put retaining walls around it, build a wall around it. I honestly feel that I just need something to work from Alf, in the letter, the original letter, Alf is a business, the assisted living facility is a business, and it should be around family. No, Alf is not a business by the core. It has assisted living facility and senior living, living is in the title. It should be in a residential district, no more than the duplexes and the rental properties that are, they're a business at the core, but yet they fall under a residential zoning district. Zoning is not about segregation. It is, but it's to segregate acid plants and cement factories from coming downstream from a residential setting, not making it to where you don't have to live next to grandma and grandpa. And speaking on that, my own personal example, last year, my son's grandfather passed away, and grandma had to lose her partner of over 60 years, her home of over 60 years, and she now resides in Andover. And it's personal to me now. So I understand there's safety concerns and there are money concerns, but this is far greater for the greater good of Hayesville and pushing this community forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Last card I have, unless there are any that are still spilling in, is Dallas Browning. Evening.
Dallas Browning, 332 East K Avenue.
Thank you.
Two very short, quick things, I will not take up your guys' time, I know you guys got stuff to do. Just listening to some of the other people talk, I don't think anybody is denying that an assisted living facility could be used here. It's just the fact of where they want to put it in an actual residential dwelling, A, single-family, I think is what it's referred to, type area where I live. I moved here from Vegas with my wife, built a custom house. You know, I like that area back there, it's quiet, we don't have any problems, any issues, except a couple speeders every once in a while, UPS guy. I don't quite understand the assisted living facility thing, as far as, is it a senior center? Is it, I mean, what is an assisted living facility, what is it used for? In my opinion, it's not in a residential neighborhood. It should be in the light commercial area. It just shouldn't be in our residential neighborhood. Pollution, noise pollution, like Zach said, light pollution, I know that stuff that we could take on a later date, but the only thing that I, Neil, and anybody else is really saying is just, we just don't think it should be in the residential area. Not that the city couldn't use it, that it shouldn't be here, but I can probably find, you know, we could all drive around and probably find an area where we could put it, and no one would bat an eye at it. That's the first thing. The other thing is that at the HOA meeting in December, when the City Council was there, Warren, the home builder, offered to buy all that land. That was eight months ago, and he hasn't heard a word back from the city about it yet. I mean, why wouldn't we want to put 40 brand-new houses in there? Like Neil said, 200, $250,000, that's $10 million right there, right off the bat. That's, I mean, that's all I have. Like I said, I want to take up your guys' time, I know it's valuable, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak? Are there any questions of the public from any members of the Planning Commission before we close public comment?
I have a question, Zach. What were the other sites besides in River Forest?
We, the Lust property that's on ready and that would fit the parameters, we did a broad...
What property?
The Lust property, it's right here at Grand and Jane Street, if you know where Public Works is at, that large field. That meets the parameters for size and utility locations. We did a broad sweep of everything in the city limits that's available. I mean, those are the two.
So just two?
Just two.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, public comment is now closed for Commission action. On the floor is open to Planning Commission members' comments.
I'm coming up.
Yes, you can.
There are a couple things that I do want to mention that were discussed. First of all, Mr. Hocke Smith did state that assisted living is not regulated. It is. It's regulated by the Kansas Department for Aging and Disability Services. And you can find their reports on their website. This one was their review that was done at them by the National Center for Assisted Living. So it is regulated by the state. I do just want to make sure, look clear on that. Yes, a particular property has been mentioned a few times, but in making this decision, we cannot look at that actual property. It is based on the entire city and what's good for the city as a whole. There are a lot of different areas that are a single-family, and you just need to look at that globally. And as far, so speaking onto that, they were asking about the values and how that affected other property. If there comes a time where an application does come into place, that would be the time that we would look at specific properties and how they're affected, and we would be happy to put those reports together at that time.
So question then.
Sure.
If it was a change, because we're looking at the whole zoning, you know, residential A, if we were looking at a change for the zoning to allow this, and we did it on a conditional nature, you're saying then, if it was on a conditional nature, everything would have to come back to us again, the HOAs or the property owners that are in the adjacent area would have to come back again instead of case again, for this to be disallowed or allowed, correct?
Right, once an application comes in, and it does, bring up a good point. So if, say, for the condition, Planning puts in a specification for screening, if five years down the road, they want to change that, they would actually have to come back before the Planning Commission, another public hearing would have to be held before any major change could be made to the conditional use application.
Okay.
So it does go further on. And then another thing is, all property that comes into the city comes in, single-family, so that gives you an opportunity for more areas, should they be annexed into the city. Right now, there really isn't a lot of land. It looks like it because the area around somewhat is vacant, but as far as what is actually in the city limits, there is very limited. It looks like it because the area around somewhat is vacant, but as far as what is actually in the city limits, there is very limited property available.
So, if you don't mind, uh, second question, is there no other suitable type of, of zoning that could be used for this? Why does it have to be in, in residential, single family, when we've got so many members of the public, like publicly speaking out against this? Why is it, why is the big push to be in residential A?
Our recommendation for it being in the single family is to make it more of a familiar residence for them. So they feel like they're not put away, tucked away in a facility, but they feel like they're a part of their community, they're still in a neighborhood, and they still have that sense of home. That is why, that's our recommendation.
I under, I understand that. The one thing that I noticed, uh, after, after we voted on it the last time, I really did a lot of thought of it. And then when I saw the email come back in that we were revisiting it, I really went around. And I did notice that there are quite a few more laundry trucks, there's quite a few more, you know, there's employees that are gonna be going back and forth. You're gonna have a lot more commercial-type activity. And so that's why I'm trying to figure out if it's twenty-six beds, it's twenty-six people, there's, you know, there's a lot more water use, there's a lot more, you know, everything. It's a, it's a commercial property. So that's why I don't understand why the big push for a residential A in a higher-class neighborhood, where they, they've paid quite a bit for their, their home, why does it have to be in this type?
Well, that's why we're not looking at this, uh, specific neighborhood, because-
Or, or just in residential A.
Any vacant residential A property.
Like in, in my home, where I'm at in Ward Two. While I, I empathize with older people that are gonna want to have a retirement community, I can see the benefits of having that in there, because they can look out the window, they can see kids playing, they can, I completely understand that. I also understand the, the simple fact of it, like the property owner said, you know, sent such great letters in. But also in my area, I mean, no offense, I understand their plight, and I really do feel for them, but it's not that far of a drive across Hayesville. To where it couldn't be in, you know, uh, uh, like commercial, it couldn't be somewhere else, why it has to be in a single family? I mean, kids walk around all the time, there's people just right out here riding bikes. So I mean, there's, there's other areas I feel that it could be used that wouldn't have so much public backlash of even wanting to look at it in a, in a single-family residential.
There could be other areas, um, but they're gonna have to be looked at specifically, and at that time, we would have to bring in the reports and do some studies on some existing homes and bring those facts here. Right now, we just have, we think it's gonna be more, um, but we could probably do a traffic study on a neighborhood that shows there's twenty teenagers on that street and they bring in one more traffic and speeding than these commercial, so.
I'm gonna jump in here.
Okay.
Uh, if we're gonna talk about traffic, we're gonna talk about it accurately.
Well, that's fine, I'm just saying, we would need to do a study that we haven't done yet.
So, uh, standard, single-family home generates about ten trips a day.
Okay.
And a trip is you leaving your house, going somewhere, and coming back, so that's two vehicles. Um, when I looked this up, and there's a few different land uses that you could discuss, uh, but most of them were anywhere from two-point-four to, I think, just under four trips per day, based on bed or DU, because this function's more like, uh, uh, duplexes or quadplexes or something like that. Not quite at the level of apartments, but also not single-family home. But single-family home is a pretty big generator for the parcel that they sit on. It's not commercial, but from a residential standpoint, it's relatively high. And there is a point that you get to, and I don't know what that point is, I didn't get that far into it, but there's a point that you get to where, depending on how these units are spaced out, there could be less traffic generated by this development, because it's so much less per DU than a, and DU is a dwelling unit, sorry. I'll stop, I'll stop with the jargon. There's so much less per DU, that you, you could, the density can be higher and make it be equal, depending on how much that density is congested in the same space. If we go from duplexes to quadplexes or whatever that looks like, each one of those is gonna be different. But to just say carte blanche that these are going to generate more traffic is inaccurate. So each one will probably require a traffic study when we get to that point. Um, I just don't want to accept the fact that it's more traffic upfront when it may or may not be. That's the whole point of the traffic study in the first place. Okay? I didn't mean to interrupt, but, uh, we were getting in the weeds.
Yeah.
And I don't want to get in the weeds about traffic.
No, no, that's great input. So what would you think then, the, the ramifications would be for this, this housing development? I'm, I know it's for the whole zoning for A. So that would be, this would pertain to my area, where I, I'm in residential A, or Debbie's area where she's in residential A.
It's everybody.
Yeah.
When we originally considered this, that is something that I had an issue with, in that it could go into any residential area, not the one that we're thinking of, but each one of those, sorry, would have to look, be looked at individually.
Yeah.
So if you look at the examples that we were sent, um, of this happening in other towns, Derby's a great example. Behind Target is Tall Tree, it's a residential neighborhood, and separating the back of Target from the residential neighborhood is, uh, and I always use the wrong term, nursing-
I should say nursing home.
Yeah, but what's the right term?
I've seen your living center.
Assisted living, yes.
There you go.
I'll try to get the terminology right as we move forward. So from my, from where I sit, assisted living is a good buffer between residential and hard commercial, especially the back of hard commercial. And that instance makes sense to me, a lot of those examples make sense to me. But what I considered with what we were looking at was, we don't get to say where that goes and whether that's a buffer. And a lot of times it will be correct, but a lot of times it may not be. So I don't want to just allow it. But what I didn't consider was, if there is unplatted or platted ground adjacent to a subdivision. So exactly the situation that we're kind of discussing, but it's what I was thinking about in broad terms when we were talking about it last time. You have a developed phase where they're selling houses, or it's already sold out, and you have a phase next to it that is either platted or unplatted, but planned to be single-family homes. This would allow us to take that undeveloped ground, whether it's platted or not, and turn it into assisted living. Not based on anything else around it, just, you could just do it as a conditional use. The difference for me, and I think what, I think is changing my mind about it, is if that is a zone change, you come to us, you do the zone change, we look at it, but we can't really put as many restrictions on it as we can if it is a conditional use. And correct me if I'm wrong, as a conditional use in residential, we have more power as a planning commission to protect the individual homeowners by putting in walls, landscape buffers, light restrictions, all of the things that we have in our toolbox to limit the impact of that development. None of that exists if it's just a zone change, is that correct?
That is correct, and with that, I'd like to add that any of the other allowing the uses would be used. So for single-family property, it would just be the, so the items that are listed on that sheet that I gave you.
Yeah.
So that's something else, but yes, these conditions.
So if we allow this, as, specifically in residential, I think it gives us more control over how that impacts adjacent citizens moving forward. So i- if you look at that example that we're considering, we have the ability to put in a landscape buffer that separates the closest home from the closest development. If you look at that exact instance, this may act as a buffer between the existing homes and the trailer park, I think, is adjacent next to it. Is that correct? There's, there's another cul-de-sac?
Yeah, there's-
There's something right there.
Sorry, I don't, that's the other side of town, I don't, I don't drive through there unless it's baseball season. So I, I, I think this gives us more options, and when these individual uses move forward, we can look at them as individual uses. Um, and, and I know that we're doing this, um, for all of the code, so this is broad strokes, not a specific location. But I don't know that I realize the full ramifications of the difference between forcing that property to go through a zone change or having to go through a conditional use, and what restrictions we could put on each individual property based on those processes. So that's, I think, where I needed clarification from where I was last time we discussed this. Uh, anybody, you have discussion also?
Yeah, so if you're saying that we could incorporate a traffic study as part of the conditional use?
We would have the ability to ask for that as part of the conditional use.
Because part of my concern is emergency vehicles too, if it's back in a residential neighborhood, and there's kids playing in the street, and they're trying to get through, you know, slowing down, just for the safety of people, assisted living care too. I think would that be looked at as part of the traffic study, the safety concerns of where it's located and really-
Potentially, yes, especially if we ask for that specifically. All of that, you know, some of that stuff we would have to, we would be able to ask for as part of a zone change as well. Traffic is one of them that I think we would consider, um, from one to the other. But this being a specific use, it would be easier to focus in on what we're actually doing than if we went to a broad strokes. Okay, this zone change from residential to light commercial, it could be any one of all of these things. But a conditional use allows us to specifically say, this is what that use will be, so our numbers would be more accurate. And we don't have to consider a bunch of different light commercial or whatever uses that zone change would be.
So if it was conditional, then we could examine each one of them on a case-by-case basis, location by location?
We would have to examine each one of them on a case-by-case basis. And we would have to implement whatever restrictions we wanted on each individual case, based on each individual location and all of the adjacent property owners and every other factor that is unique to that one facility.
So then by adding that in there, that, uh, it would be okay to add this in for the residential type A on a conditional basis? We could take care of both the property owners from the adjacent properties, the homeowners, the HOAs. We could take their input on that, that certain property and be able to weigh that against, against, you know, where it's gonna be at, what it's going to be doing, the full scope of operation for it.
Yeah, and correct me if I'm wrong again, conditional uses are public hearings.
Correct.
So the public would have the chance to speak at every instance of one of these facilities going into residential, e- everywhere in the city. It would be on the planning commission, if it's not us, but whoever's after us, to make sure that the needs of the citizens are met at that point. But I feel relatively confident that we could come to at least, uh, an agreement as to what restrictions could be placed on those to protect the adjacent citizens.
Do you think it would be in the scope of the HOA to be able to, uh, to, to be able to, to put out like a, a survey for their, their residents that are in there, to give that back to the city?
Well, that, that's gonna depend on each individual, individual HOA. But from, from what we've done in the past, if these facilities operate like, I think they operate, where they have what's essentially an, an overlooker that takes care of all of the outdoor grass and mowing and all of that stuff, you know, if, if I'm a homeowner, there's a lot of instances where that is better for me as a homeowner than the alternative, which is, you know, the two guys over there that don't ever mow their grass, and the other guy that doesn't take care of his backyard, and it's full of all the neighborhood cats. You know, if, if there's not a mechanism in place from the HOA to take care of that, that's more of a restriction than I think what we would end up at. But again, we're talking about individual cases.
Yeah.
And each one will be different, and it will be up to us to make sure that we protect the adjacent property owners.
Yeah, because my only concern with it is just making sure that the city can be persuaded. Uh, the gentleman back there, I forget his name, I apologize. Zach, uh, he'd said that there was only two areas in, in Hayesville that, that we could even look at this.
Well, to, to clarify, I think what he said was, there are two open pieces of ground inside city limits that are big enough to accommodate this. So if you look at a map, we're surrounded by open aggregation, agricultural, sorry. I'm talking for a while. Open agricultural ground, none of which is in city limits.
Yeah.
So if a facility wanted to go into one of those pieces of ground, it would need to be annexed into the city, it would need to be platted, it would need to be all the other stuff.
An additional cost with that.
Yeah. And we'd have to do studies on whether or not we can feed it with water and sewer and all of the other stuff that comes with the plan.
What would adding something like this into residential type A, just as an example, um, with Neil and, and then Hockersmith's letter here, what would be, would there be any kind of a bonus for them if they did have something to go in there, like say their special? That they would have for a new area, if they had a, a commercial place like this, wanted to go in there and, and take up space?
I don't know how that works. You know, you've got streets and water and sewer built for a lot of that, right? But there's-
We're tapped and ready to go over there.
But the specials are-
The specials, that would be, whatever we put in, that's the special assessment. So if we do a street, if there's no houses over there right now, there's nobody to assess the specials, it's the city that would be on the hook for any kind of special assessment at that moment.
Unless we wanted to put it on to whoever that end user is.
Exactly, the end user, but that would probably depend on what that is, what that looks like.
Right, but again, case by case.
Right.
Any other discussion? Yes, ma'am?
I'd just like to make a comment. I spent a lot of time with my dad, he was ninety-four, at the one in Derby. And when I first seen the assisted living place over there, I had no idea was, that is what it was, it was so nice. I mean, I was really impressed with how good it looked. It was like individual places, and like, like you said, that grass was mowed, it was just, it was clean and sharp looking.
Yeah, I, I wish, I wish we had a better understanding of what these facilities were.
Because if you've seen one-
And when we get to that point, uh, where we're talking about a specific location, I think we'll come in with, you know, a, a pretty color drawing of what the ground is gonna look like, and, and a picture of what the inside of the facility looks like. It's not, it's not like anything else we have in town, if I'm correct in saying that. Um, and I think we're all probably picturing something a little bit different.
Well, it was individual homes, it looked like individual homes to me.
It's in Derby, correct?
Yeah, it's in Derby.
So we could drive over?
Oh, yeah, yeah, and it's, it's actually really nice.
Well, I was kind of going to the point that I was gonna make, I mean, I've read, I briefly skimmed the internet and stuff, and some cities were implementing, you know, sizing restrictions of these things in residential areas, so that they're more of the scale of a big house versus like, um, a small hospital, you know what I mean? So it's not necessarily like it would stick out like a sore thumb in a neighborhood.
Yeah, and I think we'd have that ability as part of that conditional use process. So you, I, I think where this makes sense in my mind is, any property that's annexed into the city, Wichita comes in as residential, is that correct?
Hayesville, yes.
Yes. Did I say Wichita?
You did.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, anything that comes into Hayesville comes in as residential. So we wouldn't have to have the additional step of rezoning a property to get it into a place where we can add assisted living. It would come in and be able to be processed as assisted living with these conditional uses immediately.
Could it be detailed out for the public on the record, what would be talked about during a conditional use, so that they can know the expectation?
We're gonna broadcast all of it.
No, I mean, just for the, even the people that are here.
Oh, the conditional use process?
Yeah.
I don't know, Angie, do we have a, something like that?
I emailed in the info sheet, but I don't have it on the right hand.
Is there any way of, of putting a, a clause in there that we would, we would be able to do a traffic study? We would be able to talk about it, see the plans of it, and, you know, the, the process for the, the, the residents in this area?
Do we want to pin ourselves down to-
That's what conditional use is.
That's what I'm saying, is there any way that we can make sure that it's, it's in the verbiage?
I, I don't know that there's a whole lot of-
Or would it need to be?
I don't know, there's a whole lot of limitations to it.
What I would say that, for kind of what you're talking about, would be a ch- change to the actual zoning ordinance. We have certain criteria that's set up on our zoning ordinance at this time to look at for conditional uses.
Okay.
Um, as we review that section, and, I mean, we could bring that up at the next one to review it and to see if there are certain ones that you can set. We can also set, um, you can set parameters in your zoning ordinance that says, for these specific types of businesses, these are the criteria they have to meet. So yes, it could be done, it would have to be done similar to this process to the zoning ordinance. Does that answer it? Does that answer it, or make more confusion?
The, the other thing I will say is, if we get a proposal for a conditional use that we feel is inappropriate, or too dense, or whatever, we don't have to approve that conditional use. We still have that ability to just say, no, that I don't think this is appropriate for the neighborhood. And I think that a, a smaller density or whatever is more appropriate, or a bigger buffer, or whatever that is. And until we see an example of what that looks like on paper, we're just not gonna accept this.
And that would protect the homeowners, that would protect everybody else around it also, because the planning commission would be going through that.
That, that's our job, that's why we're here.
I'd like to make a motion then, uh, Tim, that's our idea.
Is there any other discussion before we?
I'll just comment that. It would be easier for a developer to change, how does somebody change? To avoid the conditional use, change it to be, or...
Yeah, that's a fair point. Angie, you tracking with what Bob's saying?
Yes, he's saying that a zone change process is gonna be more, well, now I lost the word.
Well...
Desirable for a developer, because there aren't gonna be those criteria put in place.
Yes, so, I think one point is, is that we have conditional use for residential. We have permitted use for a lot of other uses. If I come in here and say I wanna change from residential to this other, and don't mention, um, I forgot, again...
Assisted.
So, thank you, Deb. Assisted Living. And I just wanna make this change from this zone to this zone, and then we approve it based on what we think he's gonna do, or she, and then, all of a sudden, they're permitted to do a zone, or, uh, assisted living, thank you, Deb, without any restrictions at all. I think that incentivizes that process where I don't think that's what we wanna do. So, how do we protect against that?
Make them all conditional uses, or all residential?
And you could absolutely do it.
Everybody track it with what we're talking about? So, do we have any concern with adding, where is it allowed now as permitted use?
D-like commercial, which would then allow it in a heavy commercial and industrial.
And everything?
Proposing to allow without conditional use in everything but residential A.
Correct.
So, if we're already zoned for multifamily, are we okay with somebody changing the zoning from residential to multifamily and then putting in a assisted living facility without any restrictions at all?
No.
So, what Bob is saying is, where do we wanna draw that line? Do we wanna make it a conditional use for every, and pull up the subcategories, the subzoning?
And you'll see those on the front page of the staff report.
Thank you, pointing that out before I dug too deep into it. So, everything, it is currently allowed in D-like commercial. As written, this is a permitted use in BB, B, and CC, which are one and two family, two and three, and four family, and apartments. Where do we feel comfortable allowing that as a permitted use with zero restriction? And where would we like for it to be a conditional use?
Say that again. All of it.
It is currently allowed in D-like commercial. What the verbiage in front of this is stating is, it is, we're voting on making it a permitted use, meaning we cannot put restrictions on it, it's just allowed in one and two family, two, three, and four family, and apartments.
So, with that, in a neighborhood, an apartment complex could go up?
No.
No?
What I'm saying is, if a piece of ground is currently zoned as apartment, that piece of ground could house a assisted living facility with zero restrictions, protecting the apartments from it. It's not as dense a land use, um, but do we want to just allow that to happen? Or would we like to look at each one individually, so that we have the ability to put restrictives on it based on a conditional use? Do we wanna draw the line somewhere, or just wanna do, everybody's gotta be a conditional use? That's the question that we're talking about.
I still like the conditional use, because then that leaves it in the, in our hands to protect the homeowners around there.
Angie? Thoughts?
Well, I just wanna make sure we're clear on one thing. So, if, we use the apartment district. If you were to do the zone change to apartment district first, which would have to happen first, before you could do the conditional use, once they zone at that apartment, then any apartment could be allowed. An assisted living would then have to have a conditional use. So, there would still be some uses that would already be allowed. But, like, maybe for the one and two family, that would only allow one and two, this is a conditional use, would then just allow an assisted living as a conditional use and one and two family. So, I think it's good to look at what the different uses are that would be permitted. And you would be looking at those individually each time they came through.
I, I don't really see a great difference between apartments and assisted living.
Well, it's, it's, it's far less dense, right? It, it, it functions more like one and two family, and maybe the argument can even be made for two, three, and four family, but not apartments. Apartments is a completely different use, and I can't envision a developer trying to take residential to apartment just to get an assisted living facility put in, when you could go to one of the other ones, it would be easier to get the zone change on.
I'd also like to note that, um, looking at the map of the zoning, most of the other ones are closer to the main roads, they're not, you know, in a noble neighborhood, so it wouldn't be as, you know, sticking out. It would be in a residential zone.
That brings up a good point, though. Why are we allowing it as a permitted use in apartments if it's so different? Just to do it across the board?
Yes, so if, if it was already zoned apartment or something, yeah. Because it is multifamily, you could make the argument that it might fit next to an apartment complex or something.
Okay, as a buffer between that and something else, or, okay.
And it does allow more beds than the one, two, or four family.
Yeah.
Whatever numbers those are.
And that makes sense, being in an apartment, apartment zone, that makes sense. It's already got more traffic, there's already a denser population of people living in the same area, because, you know, they're multi-level. That makes sense.
So, what we're talking about then is conditional use for A, BB, and B, and permitted use for apartment and light commercial.
Correct. I'd like to make a motion for that, exactly what you said, for conditional use on A, BB, and B, with allowing, uh, allowing its use in C, C. There you go.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in second to allow assisted living facilities as a conditional use in A, BB, B, as a permitted use in CC.
Just wanna clarify one thing. So, you could take these individually, but what's actually proposed are all the changes. So, do you want to revise the motion to maybe say, approve all the recommendations with this change?
Yes. Because we're also talking about the wireless and the other things that are changing in the zoning code.
Yeah.
These are the only changes that you would like to make in your motion.
Correct, thank you.
And to clarify, that is also your second?
Yes.
Okay, so, we are voting to incorporate all of these changes, including the wireless and the other things that we discussed. But we are changing, adding residential, um, adding assisted living facilities as a conditional use in A, BB, and B, and as a permitted use in C, which is different than what was presented. All in favor? Uh, you wanna call the roll?
I would, please. Asia?
Hi.
Franken? Nay? Plummer?
Yes.
Green?
Here.
Yes, or no?
Yes, yes, hello.
Weddington?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hattrick?
Yes.
I just would prefer to leave it unconditional for the residential.
Sorry, would you say that louder?
I preferred having the conditional use for residential A only, just since the rest of them were more accessible on the main roads. That was my reason for Nay.
Okay, um, in the future, if you don't agree with us, don't let us, well, just, if you wanna continue to speak about it, if you think everybody's decided, that's, that's fine. But if you still had concerns with it, I'd like to hear those, and we can continue to discuss it and see if we can all get on the same page.
Okay.
Okay.
Be careful what you wish for, because you can have a lot of meetings.
Okay. Item five, we're only halfway through the agenda. Uh, new business?
No.
Good. Any old business?
No.
Any correspondence and informational reading?
Oh. You didn't actually close the public hearing?
Oh.
Yeah, I bet you did.
I missed that, luckily Chris is paying attention.
Uh, I closed public comment.
We're good.
Didn't I?
Someone needs to make a motion, close public hearing.
Oh, there you go, got our attorney.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion second, close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Do we, do we need to make new motions and revote? We just have to...
No, we don't, you just closed it after. Because even though the public hearing comment was closed, you still had the ability to ask them questions.
Okay.
So, after.
To be clear, that's not clear on my script.
I was saying, I need to work on the script.
Adding...
A lot.
Zoning code revisions would have been good also. Uh, correspondence and informational reading?
I do not have any.
Committee updates?
How about Matt?
No.
Any off-agenda?
Yes.
Item 10.
Move the chair.
Second. I have a motion in multiple seconds to adjourn all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, everybody.